Four.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it looks to me like the planning committee is not here yet. But we'll go ahead and we will open the Anacortes City Council meeting on the 24th at 6:00 PM. And Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton. I expect we'll see her soon. Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
You. I will go to item two on our agenda, which is announcement and committee reports. And the first item is item two A, which is COVID update. And we had two new cases today in Skagit County, seventeen over the weekend, which brings us to a total of nine hundred and eighty-three positive cases in the county. We've had eighty-eight people hospitalized and we've had twenty-two deaths and we have three hundred and twenty-nine people recovered in Skagit County. In Anacortes at Island Hospital, we've tested four thousand one hundred and seventeen. We've had fifty-two positive tests. We've had ten hospitalized cases and zero deaths. In Washington State, we've had seventy-one thousand three hundred and thirty-one confirmed cases with one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven deaths in our state. The county must have fewer than twenty-five per thousand residents over fourteen consecutive days and we have, we're at seventy-one point one new cases per hundred thousand. The county must have greater than fifty individuals tested for each new case during the prior week and we're currently at twenty-four point four. Number three, the percentage of individuals testing positive must be less than two percent and we're currently at four point one, so we are making that metric. And these are all metrics to get us to the next, ready for the next phase. Item four is the percentage of beds occupied in the county must be less than eighty percent and we're currently at seventy-six point seven percent. And lastly, number five, the percentage of those beds occupied by COVID-19 cases must be less than ten percent and we're currently at one point nine, so we meet that metric also. So we're meeting, we're meeting two out of the five metrics to move to the next phase. In the United States overall, we've had five million, five million, six, five, five point sixty-eight million cases. We've had a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three deaths. Globally, we've had twenty-three point three million cases and eight hundred and six thousand deaths. And I believe that is the total on COVID. The county would also have asked me to remind the community about the importance of doing the census. The census gives us funding that we need for the next ten years for programs in our area and also the census, if we have growth, will allow us another seat in the House. So we need to make sure that we're getting the census taken care of. And the CARES Act funding that we've been receiving through all of this is also based on population. So population and county population is key to much of the funding and the services we receive from the federal government. So remind your neighbors and friends to go to my census, my2020census.gov. It'll take about fifteen minutes to sign, sign up and get that done. On September 2nd, a Skagit County Health Officer, Dr. Liebrand, will join myself in my weekly COVID-19 briefing. If you have questions you'd like to hear Dr. Liebrand address, feel free to email me and we'll get that to Dr. Liebrand. So I thought it'd be nice to do a scientific community basing, you know, a briefing based on all the information that the Health Department keeps during this COVID time. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. We'll move on then to item two B, which is our Park and Rec Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Council Parks Committee met last Thursday evening and Councilmember Young and I were both there. We had a good list of things to talk about. One was Whistle Lake and I was surprised to learn that there's a hundred-year-old dam at the south end of the lake and we are required by RCW to come up with a plan for that dam should it fail sometime in the future. So that is forthcoming. It's sort of like happened at Little Cranberry Lake back in the nineties when they put up the log boom and did the spillway. So they're looking for ways to move forward with that eventually. There have been a fair amount of issues in our parks, not just our local parks but state parks, with behavioral health issues, mental health and substance abuse issues. And our park staff is seeing a lot of that, drinking, smoking, drunk driving. So there are conversations going on with you, Mayor Gear, I believe, and Chief Small and a search for funds for a seasonal ranger type person who can help with the issues that are facing our community with our increased population and so many more people getting out in parks, there are just increased opportunities for problems unfortunately and people are struggling and it's, it can be kind of tough out there. So staff is looking at what would make sense long-term in order to keep a handle on that. Our land is protected, our parks are protected, but we need to protect our people also. So that's a conversation that's happening. Also, the, this is on a lighter note, the Parks Department is working with the Library Department and the Museum Department to work with the Anacortes School District to help with the needs of families during COVID. So looking at ways to keep kids engaged, like while they do hikes, things to tie in with a STEM curriculum, science, art, nature enrichment for kids, maybe in conjunction with things that will happen with the senior college. And to encourage fitness and reading and all that good stuff. So there are early conversations about how to bring in multiple organizations and talents and ideas to really help keep our community learning and growing and doing positive activities throughout this. The sailing contract is being finished up and that will be ready to sign here pretty soon and it will come to council. We also talked about the cemetery and the permit for clearing and grading has been submitted and that is the beginning. The idea is to get rid of the road and the trees first, clear and grade the area, seed the soil and go into winter all buttoned up and have everything in a good spot for it to sit for a while over the winter and until more funding is available. They're working towards that. And then we talked about the Depot Plaza restroom and the site preparation that will be happening. We also want to extend our appreciation to the port for letting the city use some of their property for laying down of materials and to Dakota Creek also for access through their property in order to do this project. I think that that is about it. Playgrounds are open, five kids at a time, that's the limit. The Washington Park, the utility upgrades are all good. There's lots of, lots of the public are out there. They, all sixty-eight camp sites are open except for the group site. And there are also conversations about the impact fees for parks being eventually erased because it's been twenty-one years since those have been updated. So there is a consulting firm that's working on that and the cost of their work will be covered by the impact fees also. So also that, always budgetary concerns. So those are being carefully monitored and worked with. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Young.
If I could add, Ms. Moulton, you're always superb in the details that you bring forward that I could never really keep up with writing them down as wonderfully as you do. But if I would add anything, it would be just a little bit more on to really how much the Parks Department and teams are working with the school system, given the fact that it's been such a difficult time trying to figure out how, not only do we keep students and parents engaged in the process, the park has lent itself to trying to figure out how can they balance that out. And it is really such a wonderful thing for the school system and all of the kids and families here in the area. And I really wanted to say thank you to them for just reaching out and working so deeply to make it a success. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? All right, then we're going to move on to item two C, our Planning Committee. Mayor Gear.
Oh, Christine, please, you go ahead. Okay, no problem. I think we, we, Mayor Gear, we just completed our Planning Committee meeting just moments ago, that's why we're a little late. Let me pull up my notes. Okay. So we had quite a bit of different issues to talk about at our Planning Committee meeting at five o'clock today. We have received a fifty thousand dollar donation to do some more small business granting that will not have the requirements of the CDBG funding. And that's actually being held by the Skagit Foundation. There's a possibility that we could get matching funds, so we are waiting to see if that is, if that's feasible and then we will move forward with advertising that grant opportunity. And the, we've got our rental assistance program that we discussed a little bit. It's about fifty-seven thousand dollars in that rental assistance program. The Family Center will be doing the review of applications and we should get the paperwork in place in the next week or two. We're hoping by August 27th to start that. They will kind of review, the AFC will review the applications and then invoice the city and then we will distribute the funds back to the Family Center. So for those people that are interested in that, the qualifications are, some of the qualifications require moderate to low income and then the funds are directly handed over to the landlord. Habitat for Humanity, we continue to talk with them about possibly a couple of building sites in the West Fifth area. Bill Turner is now kind of our contact person with Habitat for Humanity and we're trying to figure out the best model for a lease program with them. So that's still kind of in the beginning stages, but we're hoping to move forward to provide some more affordable housing. We talked briefly about the Tommy Thompson train with regards to our Planning Committee and what that looks like from the current proposal for, from our local train group. And so we are really, really hoping to hear more from them in the near future so that we can kind of have a better understanding of what their scope of a project looks like and we can make the best decision moving forward with the, with the train. What other things? We talked a little bit more about the Port Northwest Basin Master Plan and their event center. Mr. Walters and Ms. Moulton and I all met with the Port and Mr. Walters kind of was able to have some further discussions with the Port and we think we may have some cool ideas moving forward. The conversation's really positive and we're working together to try to have like, have the best possible project that, that highlights the strengths of the city and strengths of the port. So I think that's a really good thing and I think we'll get more discussion and hopefully a development agreement out of that. That's pretty much what we discussed unless Mr. Walters or Ms. Moulton has things to add. Nope, okay.
There ain't nothing. Any questions? All right, then we'll move on to item three, which is our public comment.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Before we go on to public comments, I thought, I would also mention that last week I attended via Zoom, the meeting that you might have heard about in the paper, the SWISS, the Skagit, Watcom Island, San Juan and Snohomish County Group. Apparently, this concept is that the counties in this region will get together and solve a number of problems or at least make proposals that they could then lobby a legislature on. And it was, I would say, an interesting meeting. Some of the topics that they would like to work on include housing and broadband. And it made me think that really the cities are sort of integral in being able to deal with, among other things, housing and broadband. And there was not very much discussion of including the cities in this group, although it did come up. I think that consensus was that we'll get the counties together and then maybe we'll add the cities later. And it seems to me that, that, that that is a really bad idea for the counties to come up with ideas to resolve these issues and not involve the cities at the outset. At least Skagit and Watcom, I think, were pretty evenly split in unincorporated and incorporated areas in terms of population. And we hold all the cards in terms of resolving housing issues because we are where all the density can go. So I would urge us to reach out individually or schedule a time to talk about it in depth among our council. But otherwise, to reach out to the county commissioners and tell them that this really has potential, but it needs to involve half the local governments, the other half, in order to be successful. There was also some talk about maybe some county councils might want to have multiple members on the executive board of the SWISS group. But that if multiple members of county commissions were on the SWISS executive board, that would mean it would be an, an open public meeting. It would necessitate it to be an open public meeting and there was apparently some implication that would be a bad thing. I don't think that there are any resolutions to these larger regional issues without it being in full public view. So it seems to me that the opportunity is right now to nip the, in the bud, the problems with this approach and redirect it to a real regional collaborative approach.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Any comments? Okay, well, we all know our county commissioners, it's something we can pick up and see where they're at on that. All right, so now it's public comment time and I see we have two attendees this evening. And just, I want to review public comment guidelines. When you, when I do call and you state your name, first and last for the record, and your, your address. And, and the decorum for public comment on, on a Zoom meeting is just like if you were in a council chambers, so, and you have up to three minutes to speak. So at this time, if you could raise your hand, or Matt can tell me who's raised their hand, we'll go from there. Matt, do we have someone, my screen went away, that showed my speakers?
Mayor Gear, we have nobody indicating that they would like to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, we actually have one who has just raised their hand. I'm Ms. Claudia. Let me go ahead and allow her in.
All right, thank you. Good evening, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, wonderful. I'm Claudia Schmuni. I live at 2308 30th Street and I'd like to comment on the resolution regarding Women's Equality Day, August 26th.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yes, I, I suggested that to the city council in my role as Public Policy Director for the Anacortes Grant to the American Association of University Women. Start back, way back in the 1770s, it started with Abigail Adams' reminder to her husband to remember the ladies. But at that time, only white male landowners were able to vote in this country. And then, a century later, came the 15th Amendment to our constitution, which gave African-American men the right to vote. Soon after that, the American Association of University Women was founded by college women who believed that other girls and women, and other Americans, should also have those educational opportunities that they had. Then with the Seneca Rights, Seneca Falls Convention, the suffrage movement for women began in earnest in the U.S. Finally, in 1920, the 19th Amendment was passed and that's what we're celebrating this year, the Centennial Year. It was ratified August 18th and it was certified August 26th. But the work didn't end a hundred years ago. It took the Voting Rights Act to ensure that African-American voters' rights would be And in this election year, we're once again concerned about voting. Washington is a vote-by-male state, but in this pandemic, understandably, many of our fellow Americans are concerned about going in person to their polls. So the work continues and... Oh, sorry, I think I dropped out. So the work continues and we respectfully request that this resolution be passed to designate August 26th, Women's Equality Day in recognition of the work that has been done and that must continue for all Americans, for all of our voting rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. All right, council, and Matt, is there anyone else who would like to speak those tonight?
Mayor Gear, I do not see any more hands being raised.
All right, thank you. All right. So at this time, we'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. This is an action item for minutes and approval of claims.
Mayor Gear.
Mayor.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Action.
Now, a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Close, same sign, motion carries. Now we'll move on to item five on the agenda under business, five A, which is open for public comment, is access Anacortes Fiber Internet update.
Evening, Mayor, council and members of the audience. I'm pleased to provide an update of the access Anacortes Fiber Internet for August 2020. We do this on a monthly basis to keep you informed of the, the, the good work that's going on within the Fiber Department. As you can see, our G-PON customer count and revenue continues to increase.
Emily, we can always see your big screen, I mean, your cover page. Can you?
Sorry, I'll work, I'll work on that, just one second.
Thank you.
Can you, can you see?
Yeah.
We're now seeing your present interview.
I'll try one, I'll try again. Can you see that now?
You see your, your introductory page now.
Okay. Can you see the second page now? I apologize for my difficulties here.
Oh, not yet. Still just looking at the first page.
It's going through, it's showing different pages on mine, so let me just take one moment, I apologize. I'm not sure why it's not progressing to the next page because it is on mine.
Okay, well, maybe you can just walk us through your report without, without the
Let me try one more. Can you see the second slide now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, I'm not sure exactly what, what happened. So the, this is the G-PON customer count and revenue going from month to month. As you can see, we have two hundred and eighty-four customers in service as of Friday. We had sold another customer today. We have nineteen static IPv4 addresses. And how that relates to our internet service is eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. The static IPv4 revenue is two hundred and forty-eight dollars and the monthly revenue in total is one, eighteen thousand seven hundred and four dollars. So you can see that there is a steady increase month over month. Thanks, Matt. Sorry, we're just a... Okay, thank you, appreciate your help. To, to break that down a little further in terms of the orders, you can see that we have two hundred and twenty-eight residential customers in service, fifty-six commercial customers in service, and the, the breakdown in terms of the, the different areas that we're looking at. So our three pilot areas are the Commercial Business District, Old Town and M Avenue. That's where the majority of our installations are right now. And we'll be moving into an aerial section one through six here shortly. So as you can see, that our take rate continues to grow in our, in our pilot areas and I'm pleased that we're at thirty-nine point two percent. As you remember, our business plan was hoping for thirty-five percent take rate. So just, this early on, I'm pleased that we're at thirty-nine point two percent take rate in the Commercial Business District and thirty-six point five percent in Old Town. We are steadily increasing on M Avenue and continuing to take lots of pre-orders throughout the city with eighteen point two percent of the possible customers already enrolled. One of the questions that, that's asked over time is, what is the percentage of customers that are signing up for the hundred megabit per second service versus the gigabit? And so our early adopters were originally more of the gigabit and we have a very even split between our residential and our business of about fifty-five to fifty-six percent with the hundred megabit service and the remaining forty-four to forty-five percent with the gigabit service. The bottom slide is looking at the percentage that are utilizing a managed Wi-Fi through the, the city. And you can see it's the, the orange and the yellow. So for our 2020, for the remaining construction that we have in place, we'll be passing one thousand two hundred and ninety-six premises. We currently have a hundred and eighty-four orders received in those areas and are looking to continue to expand that. The, there is a bit of a delay. We have all of our materials received, the contract is complete with the Robinson Brothers, but the holdup right now is that the make-ready construction work with PSE will not be able to start until September 14th. We're not able to begin the backbone construction until that work is done. And so we are doing as much workaround as we can. Our B.C., our Robinson Brothers Construction, is mobilizing and beginning their underground boring work and that will start next Monday here in aerial section five. And then staff will begin inside installations in preparation to expedite the, the hookups once that backbone area is complete. As we've been discussing... As we've been discussing, the countywide, uh, fiber inter, inner connectivity is complete. Uh, connects the City of Anacortes, Mount Vernon, and Burlington. And this connection is being immediately used for the Noanet Ethernet Circuit and the Island Hospital Dark Fiber Agreement that we have. Countywide disapproves our ability to support Skagit County where the communication needs. And long-term, we expect that they'll be entering in a, into an agreement with us uh, to better support the, the public safety needs in the, their inner connectivity. And it also allows us to, to be competitive and responding to RFPs for services. We do have some special projects underway with the Samish Indian Nation and Island Hospital. We're calling these ad hoc installations with the Samish Indian Nation, uh, because they are helping with some cost sharing on facilities that are going to get serviced, um, ahead of our planned schedule. And that is something that we would be willing to, um, consider with other businesses, if there are businesses that are interested in needing service now. If they're able to do some cost sharing with us for that installation, we may be able to get them in service more quickly. With Island Hospital, we have a dark fiber lease that's been completed. And we will be working with four different, um, connections. One is an additional site that was just, uh, negotiations are just underway now. And the Noanet, um, this is a major milestone for us, but the Noanet K-20 contract is ready for service. And that's a two-gigabit point-to-point Ethernet circuit, um, that, that we're providing from Anacortes into Burlington for them. Looking ahead to 2021 for financing and expansion, um, Mr. Lundberg and I have been spending time doing some forecasting review with the projected construction costs. We are preparing a Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant Application. It's a, quite a, a thorough application, and we appreciate the, the support that other departments are helping us with, um, with things like filling out a NEPA application. Um, we're also looking into ideas about lines of credit. And in general, what we're planning for the 2021 network expansion is that the area from A Avenue East following the city limits, that we will backfill and provide service within all of those areas. So, from the city limits to A Avenue, um, following the city limits, we will be able to provide service. This will allow us to pass an additional 1,815 premises. So, by the end of 2021, we'll have past 4,088 premises of our approximate 7,600 within the city. One of the items that we are very aware of is that the, the rate of installations is an important part of this project. And we are always looking at ways to increase the, the number of installations that we're able to do. We do have an additional fiber technician who'll be joining the team on September 8th. And we are beginning, um, to do just the inside installations in advance of the backbone construction and finding small turn, turn of work schedules to make the most efficient use of our staff's time. One of the things in looking to 2021 is that the majority of the installations that we'll be doing will require underground installations. And so, we, um, have researched and, um, determined that a Toro Dingo will be a very helpful tool for us. It's a modular tool, and it has a lot of different capabilities. Um, that is compact, people are able to, to walk behind it, and it will allow us to add different equipment over time. It will be something that, throughout the city, will be very versatile for, for other departments to, to utilize as well. This first picture that we're, they're looking at shows this wide-track dingo with the high torque, um, high torque heavy-duty drive system attached to it. And that will allow us to dig trenches up to 50 inches below grade. Um, and it will work really well with our soil conditions here in Anacortes. The other component that we're purchasing is this piece that allows us, it's a, a borehead that allows us to do work, um, underground, both in confined and open areas. And so, we're able to, to go under a sidewalk or go under a driveway, um, to, to bore that without having to, to break up the, the cement or concrete on top. So, we're excited to add this, um, to our equipment to be able to, to make the most efficient use of time with the underground installations. Our staff have looked at, um, have had the ability to, to utilize this in a rental capacity, and we're very pleased with it. And then Mr. Ludeman was able to find it on the state contract. And so, we're in the final purchase, um, process for, for this tool. We continue to do outreach in the community and have seen a real steady growth in new orders for service. Um, we had a, a lot of people that responded to the utility bill envelopes. And I think that last week, or the week before, uh, the last utility bills were sent out, we saw a, a, a big increase as a result of that. Um, we are utilizing the, the billboards on the sanitation vehicles, hopefully you've seen that. Continuing to do some advertising in Facebook. We do have door hangers that when we're working in a neighborhood, that we let people know. And it's really, truly our, um, residents that are just providing wonderful word-of-mouth referrals and including information on Facebook. And when there's a question for new people that are moving to the community about, you know, "I need internet service, where should I look?" We're always so pleased when the, the City of Anacortes's, uh, access internet is, uh, is highly recommended by, by our community. So, um, in imparting, we are your city internet service. Uh, we offer really fast speeds with really low prices. We're very reliable, and we're locally run. What our customers love is the, the way that when the, the installers come to their house, the interaction that they have, they show up when they say they're going to show up, when they call to talk to somebody, our staff are there to, to answer their questions and work through. And so, I'm just trying to encourage people to continue to, to share information about our, uh, different plans. And if you have any questions, we're happy to, to answer those as we continue to, um, provide more and more internet service in, in this time of, of need, especially with the, the schools going online, uh, with so many people continuing to work from home. As we're looking at telemedicine options for, for people that are trying to limit to their exposure to, to outside, we want to be the, the in, internet company of choice. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, Emily. Um, it looks like, um, you've answered our questions for now. Any questions from the council before we move forward? All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the public? Matt, was anyone raised their hand? Let me see. No, okay. I see. All right, so the next item tonight is Item 5B. It's open for public comment, it's Ordinance 374, amending Section 1.3480, the Anacortes Mental Code Regarding Executing Contracts for Dark Fiber Leases and Telecommunications Contracts. Ms. Swetnam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and audience members who are watching. I appreciate the opportunity to present this ordinance tonight. And this ordinance is a result of work with the fiber team, um, and the fiber committee to look at how we do contracting and continue to find ways to try to streamline that process. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and share a copy of the ordinance on the screen here. Um, as far as the mechanics of it, it's pretty straightforward. We already had a section in our chapter on contracts, which is Section, uh, Chapter 130. Um, you'll see the red underlined language is what we've added to this, uh, in this ordinance. Um, essentially, excuse me. What was there previously was authorization for the fiber director to sign contracts that were for residential and business class, uh, internet service. Uh, we're also seeing that the fiber department is having a number of dark fiber leases that are, that are moving forward. Um, there's been no contracting authority that's been delegated for those. And so, the recommendation was that the mayor be authorized to sign those dark fiber leases, provided therefore no more than eight strands, and that the lease is on a form that's been approved by the city attorney. Um, we have worked with the fiber department to develop a template dark fiber lease. And so, we'll be looking at that lease draft as the starting point for any of these dark fiber leases. Um, the fiber department was also recommending that we include telecommunications contracts. There have been a number of those contracts that have come up, including point-to-point Ethernet service, dedicated internet access service, and static IPv4 address agreement. Uh, and so, they're recommending that those contracts for telecommunications services using our network be, uh, delegated for the mayor to authorize. Um, we've included language in here that says that any contract that the mayor ha, isn't authorized by this section to sign will have to be approved, uh, under the remaining provisions of the chapter. Um, and I just wanna point out one additional change that I apologize, I failed to turn red and underline. Um, but in the delegation of authority to the fiber director to approve the residential and business class internet services, the other standard format that's kind of part and parcel with that for a lot of our customers is a right-of-entry agreement. And that's an agreement that we've worked closely with the fiber department to develop that basically gives the city permission to go into the premises and do the work that needs to happen to connect them. So, um, those, you know, those are, are fairly straightforward, they're not being, uh, negotiated. Um, and they are, and they are part of the transaction for executing these residential and business class internet contracts. Um, so I did add this, this language here. Um, so that's, that's the only other change to the existing language. Um, I believe Emily and Mr. Lundberg are also available to answer any specific questions that any of you have. And I am also happy to answer questions.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Young.
Um, this question would probably be best, I guess, addressed by Ms. Swetnam. Uh, at the bottom down there, I think it's under Section B in the red. It reads, "Any contract that the mayor is not authorized to approve pursuant to this section must be approved pursuant to this chapter." That was a little bit confusing for me, so I was wondering if you could tweak that just a little bit. You know, I read it a couple of times, I, or could we possibly refer to where they need to go pursuant to section so-and-so-and-so would be better for me, at least in my view. That's my only comment, thank you.
Sure, that's a great, that's a great point, and I can see that that is sort of confusing language. Um, would it make sense to say must be approved pursuant to the remaining sections in this chapter? Uh, because it may be that we're not sure exactly which particular section in the chapter would be applicable, um, that we could, we could, maybe, maybe that makes it clearer.
I, I think it would, I really do, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor Gear?
Miller.
Um, yeah, I, I, I of course support the, this contract. I will just, uh, reminder, I know we've talked about it a number of times at, uh, committee meetings. And I certainly like the idea of delegating this authority, especially 'cause it's, you know, basically bringing revenue in. And of course, we have limits on the mayor's authority to approve contracts for, I can't remember the number, 40 or 45,000, or update from when it was 30,000. So, again, all good with that. The only limit that, um, I don't think any changes to the contract, but just for, uh, education, um, the only limit that I've always been concerned about is at least as much dark fiber as possible to anybody who wants it, as long as we still retain enough, uh, capacity to service our 7,600, uh, 7,600 residents potentially. That's, that's really the only limit that I'm concerned about for, uh, a, any, um, mayor's authority or staff's authority to, to, to lease, um, strands of, of fiber. And I don't think it's an issue. Um, I know we've talked about it, tech, there's technical, technically, it's not an issue, but I just wanted to bring it up, uh, as a reminder.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walter.
Um, I had suggested some of these limits, you know, that we limit the dark fiber le, leases to eight strands. Um, I'd also suggested that we limit them temporally, that there be a, a length of time in the mayor's authorization here. So, that the mayor could authorize a dark fiber lease for five years or 10 years or something, but maybe not for 30 years. Uh, when I took office, there were no constraints on contracts. There was a delegation of authority for $30,000, and that wasn't clear what effect that had. And departments individually were executing contracts, and contracts were executed without terms. And there was no visibility into the contracts, 'cause we didn't have the laserfish system. So, we've come a long ways, uh, since that time. But we're also going backwards a little bit with fiber in that now we're not putting the fiber contracts into the public laserfish system. And we are delegating more and more authority, um, to sign contracts that we don't see. When we started this fiber project, there was a suggestion at one point from staff that we leased a whole lot of dark fiber, um, maybe consistent with what Mr. Miller suggests. If we, if we were to take the approach that we will lease dark fiber to anyone, it seems to me we would be hard-pressed to not lease dark fiber to everyone, including to Comcast and Wave Cable and anybody else who wants to lease dark fiber. And our investment in stringing this fiber up everywhere is, is what has made this network possible. If we then just turn around and lease it out, we will not have revenue that is necessary to support the network being run out to everybody's residents throughout town. So, that's why I think it is in, it is incredibly important that we have this limit on the dark, number of strands that we'll lease to any individual entity. Um, but the way this is structured, it, it actually is not per entity, it's per lease. So, that is potentially problematic, maybe we could enter into 10 leases to lease 80 strands. Uh, eventually, the city council will have given up its control over how this network is structured, uh, through these delegations of authority. And I'm not certain that that's the direction we wanna go. The fiber is still very much in its infancy here, our fiber project is. And I'm okay with some delegation of authority, but with constraints, eight strands, maybe per entity, and with a time limit, then none of, but neither of those provisions are in this, in this text.
Would it make sense, uh, Mayor Gear? Would it make sense to maybe include a clause that, uh, that suggests on any given, uh, backbone fiber run that once we've approached, say, some percentage, like 30 or 40% of the fiber is leased or subject to lease, that there then be like a gate where there's a, a city council review or something like that?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walter?
I think that might also be useful in addition. But, uh, 40% of our, our dark fi, our currently dark fiber strikes me still as a, as a lot.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking specifically like the, the primary transport runs, where you've got the run out through, through the water pipe out to the water treatment plant. That's a 288, um, fibers in that run. So, 40% of that is, still leaves a great deal of fiber. Then other key runs where dark fiber leasing is kind of an option would be like, you know, out Oaks Avenue, of course, up and down Commercial, or, uh, and up and down M and D, those kinds of runs where hopefully we've got at least 72, if not 144 fibers in most of those runs.
Mr. McDougal, I have a question. Um, typically, um, on dark fiber leases, are there time constraints? Does that hinder getting customers? Um, curious.
I think that the majority of dark fiber leases in the industry are kind of a three-to-five-year lease. Although I've seen them as long as... lease, although I've seen them as long as ten or even twenty years. If it's like, you know, something that's cross-country or subsea cable, those can be like twenty years.
But the majority of those, that falls within an industry standard, so.
Yeah, yeah, especially within the city, definitely three to five.
I just don't want us to hinder our business either, but it sounds like we wouldn't and we could put some controls in place to protect our infrastructure.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young.
Just to follow up on what was said earlier by Mr. Walters, Mr. Miller, and Mr. McDougall, I guess the biggest concern I would have, and I know we have plenty of room for expansion, is to just ensure that we have enough for our area and any of those businesses that we will give service to, not only for right now, but into the future. I know that, you know, there may be other opportunities to come up along, whether at Skagit, Port, or any of the other businesses, and, you know, within our reach. I just want us to always have a bit of capacity. So my only caution, and I don't believe we're anywhere near it right now, is that we not go so far that we limit what we may need later as we discover what that may be as well. So, thank you.
Okay, well, Ms. Swetlemann, do you have suggestions based on this?
Sure, I think that, I appreciate the feedback, and it sounds like we need to maybe restructure the dark fiber lease subsection that has a series of requirements. So in order to have the delegation of authority be granted to the mayor, it must be for no more than eight strands. It must be provided there is a certain percentage of excess capacity. It must be limited in terms of timeframe. And so I'm happy to take the feedback that you all have provided today, integrate that into an updated draft, and put that on the packet for the September eighth meeting.
Is there any other comments?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, and the excess capacity has always been my concern. I think it's just a math problem, a hard math problem, not one that I am capable of doing now and expect our city attorney to do it, but it's, the math problem is, you know, whether it's seven thousand residences or businesses at one gig, you know, do we have, you know, can a hundred-and-forty-four strand or two-eighty-eight strand provide all of that to service those customers, or how many strands that is? And that's the capacity that I'm interested in preserving, because that, so you may need some technical insight on that, but we're not going to figure out tonight, just as you go forward in this. And I guess the other question, is this going to hold up any fiber leases that we've got coming up? I'm slightly concerned that, because I don't want to hold up anything that we've got in the works.
No, it won't.
I don't.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, and we'll come back on September eighth.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
So to expand on that a little bit, so I think it's useful to have a delegation of authority. I think it's useful to have proper constraints on the delegation of authority. But where a proposed lease goes beyond those constraints, the mayor couldn't sign it, but it could still come to the city council, and the city council could still approve it. So what happens when an entity comes to us and says, "Well, we just want to lease all of your dark fiber"? Because you've done this great job of building out the network for us, you know, spending twelve million dollars building fiber all over town. We would like to lease the dark fiber that you have left over and sell our own service over the top of it. That is a different model than what we have been discussing, but it is one that is pursued by other entities elsewhere. We, I think, made the choice to not do that, because we wanted to make sure that we could make this thing pay for itself, but also be able to serve all residences in town. So it seems to me that we should, you know, make these changes to the delegation of authority section here and pass this ordinance. But then also, we should pass a policy on when we're going to ever lease dark fiber, so that we don't get ourselves in that pickle of someone asking to lease dark fiber and us not having a legitimate rational basis to say no.
Okay, so is that it? It's into this conversation? Sounds like a bigger conversation.
Mayor Geer?
It's an urgent conversation, and it's one that I've brought up before, because it seems to me it's a real threat to this project.
Was that Ms. Molson?
Yes, thank you. So I know we've had conversations about potentially extending our fiber network across Reception Pass to Whidby Island and perhaps having another municipality like Oak Harbor. Would they be purchasing, my question is, would they be purchasing dark fiber to use for their community, or is it a different process?
Swetlemann, do you want to answer that, or do we want?
Yeah.
Different process, but I think maybe Mr. Buckamire could address that. I don't believe we're considering leasing them fiber.
No, I can address that, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it would be a little bit of a different arrangement. We're actually currently working with the City of Oak Harbor right now on an agreement by which they allow the city to put a hundred-and-forty-four strands in their water pipe, which is in better condition than the city's is, at no cost, all the way to Pass Lake. And so the city would allow the City of Oak Harbor to use two dozen of those strands, and then everything south of the Pass Lake inner tie would be the City of Oak Harbor. So at this point, the city's kind of building out to the boundaries of the, you know, the island. But then, you know, in order to get to Whidby Island, they would probably have to talk to the city about, you know, if they needed to go beyond the two dozen that they have. So those are going to be different arrangements that are just going to, you know, we're just going to have to work through them as they come up.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll be bringing that agreement to city council, probably within a month, I would say, so.
And then, Mr. Walters, to address your question, perhaps that could be one of the things we do at the next fiber meeting? Or some other point, perhaps not tonight, but we could go in depth shortly on that. Is that what your thinking is?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'll talk to you about setting something up. Okay, so, based on the conversation, Ms. Swetlemann will return to us on September eighth with the corrected language in the document. Is there any other comments? Okay, all right, thank you. We'll move on. There was no one with a public ready to speak. And at this time, we'll move to Item 5C, which is open for public comment. It's our monthly finance update, including COVID-19 impacts. Mr. Hoagland, this is discussion only tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. Wanted to, there we go. I've got the same set of charts that I normally go through. Starting this presentation with the water consumption chart, it's been kind of incorporated into the monthly review. This, it's the same format, so the columns that you're seeing here, two thousand nineteen, the first column is two thousand nineteen total consumption, January through July. And then the second column is the change from June to July in those categories. So each of the, you can see the customer base over on the far left side, each of the rails represents a different customer, and then in two thousand twenty, so comparing that same customer base to the prior year. And I, this has been interesting for a number of reasons, but what's really become evident, this trend of decreased consumption is really evident now as we are through the first seven months of the year. Each of, you can see last year, two thousand nineteen, each of these categories, with the exception of the PUD, each of these categories increased consumption in July over the prior month, which is true again in two thousand twenty. But when you look at the total consumption for the year, January through July in two thousand twenty, the industrial base used three hundred and seventy-four million cubic feet. Last year, it was three hundred and eighty-four million cubic feet. Likewise, the rest of the wholesale base was at seventy-three-point-eight million cubic feet, down to seventy-point-four this year. And then even in the retail section, the decrease in commercial consumption is not a surprise. What did surprise me was there was a decrease in the residential consumption. Now again, this is looking at the entire year to date, June, sorry, January through July, but in each of these, each of these categories, you can see the decrease. In the industrial base, consumption's down two-point-five percent, the rest of the wholesale base, four-point-five percent, and in the retail section, it's down seven-point-four percent. So water consumption overall is down three-point-four percent compared to the first seven months last year. This is significant from an immediate financial perspective, because we collect utility tax on both water consumption and sewer consumption, and the sewer consumption is tied to the water consumption, with the exception of the wholesale base. So seven percent utility tax applied on the sale of both water and sewer in the retail section. And we can look at the actuals in the finance, in the utility tax collection in a little bit. Overall, this is that same chart, looks at the overall tax base of the city's property taxes, the main property tax receipts come in in two months, May and November. So year-to-date through July, we're at fifty-six percent collection of property tax, which is right about where we would expect to be. Same thing with utility tax at fifty-six percent. Sales taxes is slightly down, I think, in July of last year, we were at, I want to say, sixty-five percent collection, and we'll look at that in more detail in a second. Real estate excise tax, leasehold tax, and the criminal justice sales tax are all where we'd expect to see them. Lodging tax at thirty percent, and we'll look at that in more detail as well, but that's way down as you would expect. But our sales tax, so this is through August receipt, and the receipt collection is two months after the sale is made. So the August receipts are sales that were made in June, and the four hundred and thirty-nine thousand listed here was a preliminary number we got from the Department of Revenue. Just today, we received the detailed number, which was only two hundred dollars different than that. So the actuals for the month is four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and nine, but it didn't change any of the metrics or comparables that we have here. So for the month of August alone, we're expecting four hundred and eighty-six thousand. The actual collection is nine-point-seven percent lower than that. But as we've talked about before, the first few months of the year, our collection was higher than what we had budgeted. So overall, we're down about seven-point-one percent compared to what we had budgeted, which is still a significant number, it's two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. But you may remember the budget amendment we did in June, where we were kind of bracing for impacts of more than a twenty-five percent impact, maybe even, I think we were looking at like a six-month period where we were kind of bracing twenty-five to fifty percent over that six-month period. So far, for the four months that we've received sales tax data, that the quarantine has been in, or the state home order has been in effect, our sales tax receipts are about sixteen percent lower than, on average, lower than what we had budgeted. So this is utility tax on private utilities. So we have utility tax on both public utilities and private utilities. Private utilities is phone service, cable TV, natural gas, and electricity. And we've talked about this the last couple of years, we noted that the utility tax on private utilities was dropping off. That revenue stream was starting to decrease. So when we budgeted this year, we were anticipating a decrease, continuing decrease in that revenue stream. We have been a little bit pleasantly surprised that that revenue stream has come back a little bit. You can see, year-to-date through July, it's actually exceeded last year's revenue by one-point-five percent, and we're almost four percent over what we had budgeted. We budgeted pretty aggressively on this revenue stream, expecting a lower number, so that has done as well so far. So we're almost four percent over budget in this revenue stream. So this is the utility tax on public utilities and the city utilities, and this is where that decrease in water consumption comes into play. So this is the utility tax on all four of the utilities. And we collect utility tax on all four of the utilities, water, sewer storm, and solid waste. But you can see, we are comparing it to the prior year, we're down one percent in that revenue stream. And, you know, as we noted in that first slide, the water consumption is down, and the sewer consumption is a metric off of water consumption. So down one percent compared to last year, we have budgeted for a tenth of a percent increase in that revenue stream, so we're down one-point-one percent compared to budget. Combining those two utility tax revenue streams, we're still a little bit over budget because of the results of the private utility tax. Looking at building permits, the building industry has continued to be strong this year through the COVID crisis. This is looking at revenues through July, we've collected three hundred and ninety-three thousand, almost three hundred and ninety-four thousand in building permit revenues. This line down here is looking at the building permit revenue collection through July of that year. So you can see, three hundred and ninety-three thousand so far in two thousand twenty compares very favorably to many of the prior years, you know, with the exception of two thousand seventeen, when we had the high school project building permit come through. But we're right in the ballpark for all of those last several years, in fact, exceeding even two thousand and fifteen. So far, through July, we've issued thirty-four single-family residence building permits. These numbers here, the bolded numbers, are the number of permits issued for the entire year, entire year. So two thousand nineteen, we issued fifty-two the whole year. If this pace of thirty-four continues, that'll be, you know, nearly sixty building permits issued for the year. Real estate excise tax, or REIT, that's the tax that's collected on the sale of real estate the second time a home is sold. The first time a home is built, it generates sales tax. When it's sold subsequently, it generates real estate excise tax. But REIT one and two, there's two-quarter percents collected on that sale. Those are combined in these figures here. So a hundred and forty-two thousand in July collected, that compares very favorably to July in all of these most recent years. Year-to-date, we've collected seven hundred and twenty-six thousand through July. Looking at prior years, you can see that's right in the ballpark with the last few years. So real estate excise tax, and that's a restricted revenue that we use for many of our public works projects, restricted to use for those types of transportation and parks projects that you think of when you talk about a public works project. Impact fees, impact fees are generated when a new home is built or a new commercial project is put into place. Through July, we've collected a hundred and twenty-one thousand. It's, this is, depending on the project, the fee collected can be crazy, and that's why this line chart is kind of weird, because it goes off the scale. But what I wanted to point out was, the cash balances that we have in place, sorry, don't look too closely at that figure, because that obviously doesn't work. So that nine hundred and ninety-five thousand actually includes this two hundred thousand in parks. So the total street, total street project use of impact fees in the two thousand twenty budget is seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. So we've already spent four hundred and seventy-four thousand of that, that's all in the Oaks Avenue Roundabout project. We have another, I think roughly nearly three hundred thousand to go on that, and if we extend all of that, and that's across two projects, the Oaks Avenue Roundabout, plus, I believe there's fifty thousand budgeted for the Thirty-second and M Roundabout project, but if all of that is expanded, all of that seven hundred and ninety-five thousand budget is extended, there'd be about sixty, something less than seventy thousand left in street impact. there'd be about 60, some, something less than 70,000 left in street impact fee tax. And the 200,000 budgeted in parks is for the cemetery project. Lodging tax, uh, we just got um, we just got August numbers today, I don't have those filled in here. Um, but it did come back a little bit, you can see through July, um, every year that, or every month that that state home order has been in place, the lodging tax has been significantly down. It did come back a little bit in August. Uh, I believe it was down, I believe it was down um, about 50% compared to the prior year. So we're at about 23,000 in lodging tax for August. But um, we do have healthy cash balance in the lodging tax fund. Um, there's no issue with any of the contracts that are in place now, and uh, most of those, many of those programs have been counseled already, and any of the programs that generate expenditures, there'll be no issue in paying uh, paying for those as they using cash balance for lodging tax. Um, this is that final chart where it just kind of have, you know, all of the cities' funds listed by um, by fund, revenues, budget versus actual expenditures, budget versus actual, you can kind of scroll through here. The percentage, you know, our metric right now is 58%, that's just seven months, you know, seven divided by 12 is 58%. So all things being equal, you'd expect to see about 58% of revenues collected and expenditures spent. It's not exactly that way with many of our funds, as you know, they are, uh, many of these funds rely on property tax, which comes in um, kind of generally in two payments, May and November. But um, parks, cemetery, library, all uh, rely very heavily on property tax, and you can see those are, you know, 51%, 59%, 52%. So all kind of in that ballpark where you'd expect them to be. Street maintenance fund, it's relying mostly on the TBD fees and REIT this year, as well as the uh, utility tax from the solid waste fund that gets allocated to the street program. Uh, the street construction fund grants impact fees primarily this year. Uh, but nothing unusual, I'd be happy to go through any of these. Um, I'll drop down to the utilities real quick. Uh, we've talked about this before, I just keep these little charts on the side here, just to maintain uh, an easy visual of where we are at on the charges budget, the charges for service budget versus the capital budget. This total over here has, has um, all of those revenue streams combined, it's just a, an easy way to get a kind of an overview of where we are on the charges collection and the um, capital collection. So you, as you can see, we're right, kind of right in the ballpark with all of those. So nothing um, really unusual or, or scary, other than the um, you know, property tax being down about 16% each year. I mean, we've noted that decrease in utility tax will continue to monitor, monitor that and make adjustments in next year's budget for that. Um, but other than that, I'd be happy to answer any, answer any questions you might have, or address any concerns you might have. Ready?
No questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, at this time then, we'll move on to um, item five C, uh, 5D, which is our Critical Areas Regulation Workshop, Draft 2 of the Critical Aquifers and Frequently Flooded and Geologically Hazardous Areas. Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Gere, thank you City Council for having me. Tonight, we're going to review the final sections of the Critical Area Regulations Update. Previously, we've reviewed the General Provisions Section, Critical Area Review Procedures, Wetlands, and Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas. Tonight, we'll briefly review the Geologically Hazardous Areas section, Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas, Frequently Flooded Areas, and the definitions.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes, sir.
Can you please push the display settings in the top left of your, and swap them?
I sure can. There are very few uh, items to discuss in all of these sections. There are no Planning Commission recommended changes to the three sections. There are a few definitions that we need to go over that were proposed to change. So I'll just briefly discuss what is in each of these sections, and if there's any discussion or questions, we can go over those. For geologically hazardous areas, the section includes description and purpose, designation, mapping, general development standards, specific development standards, and critical area report additional requirements. This picture demonstrates a, a local occurrence of a coastal bluff wasting event, and why it's so important to have an updated geologically hazardous area section in our regulations. This is the ledge which slide on with the island. Major changes to the section that have occurred between the current Chapter 17 and the new Chapter 19 include added designation for marine bluffs that refers the regulations back to the Shoreline Master Program. The exemptions based on size of structures are removed, there's no longer any exemptions from this requirement. Previously, there was the 50-foot buffer. It remains the same, however, the reduction has changed to allow only a maximum reduction of 25%. So we've lowered the amount of buffer reduction that is allowable. And then the language has uh, strengthened in the vegetation retention and management requirements. Here is an updated draft map showing the various kinds of geologically hazardous areas within Anacornus shorelines and elsewhere. You can see color-coded for shorelines, erosion hazards, soils, and tsunami hazard areas. And that is all I have to share about geologically hazardous areas. Does anybody have questions or discussions further on that topic?
Mayor Gere.
Mayor Walters.
The tsunami hazard areas are on this map, but we don't consider them geo-hazard areas, do we?
Yes, they are included in um, the definition of geologically hazardous areas for the purposes of our regulations.
Okay.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper, I have one question that refers back to the buffer reduction. On page 75 of the draft, 19.70.430, Section A2, Buffer Reduction, says "The decision-maker may reduce the standard buffer by a minimum of, of 25%." I think that's just a typo that would say maximum there.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Molton. That's correct. That is a typo that is marked to be addressed in the, the next draft.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Moving on to Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas. This section has been completely revamped. The old section was difficult to administer. This section includes description and purpose, applicability and hazardous materials questionnaire, designation, mapping, general development standards, specific development standards for regulated facilities, and critical area report additional requirements. The purpose of this section is to provide the public with clean, safe, and available drinking water, and contribute face-flow protection to aquatic resources. The main administrative change to this process is the addition of a questionnaire. When development or redevelopment of a regulated facility um, occurs, they must submit a hazardous materials questionnaire. So the section, one designates what regulated facilities and activities are, as well as the designation of the areas where the groundwater and drinking water issues occur. And we can see that on the map. So if you're a listed regulated facility, and you're within the area designated as a critical aquifer recharge area, then you must fill out the questionnaire. So you can see, we've mapped number one, uh, highly permeable soils, and then number two, actual wellheads and well-protection circumference areas. So that's a thousand-foot radius around each well. So if you're a listed regulated facility in this, these areas, then you must go through the questionnaire and, and administrative review for your activity.
Mayor Gere.
Walters.
Um, thank you. Ms. Cooper, do you know, just as an aside, are those city wells or currently working residential or industrial wells? I, I'm just curious about those.
I don't have the data on that. We can certainly look, um, I, I-
Sort of an anecdotal question, just out of curiosity, if they're working. I don't know, I didn't know we had wells in the city like that.
I think that they're probably relic wells, a, and potentially um, mostly residential areas that just have not. Looks like it's mostly in the R1 zone, um. And so I think that they're still probably maintained um, by the county health department records. Um, but I could get more information for that if we think um, that it's relevant to the discussion for sure.
I don't think it totally is, but thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yes, as a resident of the R1, there are some of my neighbors that are on well water and, and, and use that as their primary source.
Thank you.
And Mayor Gere.
Yes, Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, I, as also R1 member, I, I'm familiar with a handful of those wells that are listed there, that are little black dots there. And also, you know, when, when development happens, if, if someone wants to come in and do a single-family residence, and there is a well on that property, there is a pretty in-depth process to go to decommission the well. So um, it's always nice to kind of know where they're located um, for, for those purposes. And that's really done with the county, on a county level.
Thank you. Any further discussions? There are, bring it up, a few prohibited activities in those areas as well, and of course, m- mostly commercial and industrial, which in the R1 residential areas, not going to be highly um, likely, but still possible. What we're really talking about is above-ground storage tanks, animal feed lots, these are regulated activities. Chemical treatment, storage, disposal, junkyard, salvage yard, uh, pesticide storage and use, sawmills, surface mining, and so forth. There is a list of prohibited uses in that area too, which are, which are new. Just a way to keep, uh, another way to keep the waters protected, just as a side note there. Okay. There's no further discussion on those. Last is frequently flooded areas. This section is also going to be revamped, and we can um, discuss the ramifications of it. The majority of this section now is listed in, in Title 17, is listed more applicable to building code and building regulations, uh, for the FEMA flood insurance program. And staff proposes to move that entire section, um, that's building code-related, out of the critical areas ordinance, and move it to its own section under either Development Regulations in Title 19, or in uh, let's see, yes, moving it to uh, Title, Section 1974, to be administered through the Building Department. So the main change for the frequently flooded areas in the critical area ordinance is just going to be the addition of the Federal Endangered Species Act requirements for floodplain development to conduct a habitat assessment report for all development in these areas. So this is just going to be the direction to where the biological assessment reports are going to be triggered. And these maps are maintained by FEMA themselves. Uh, we don't maintain them in our database, but they're an interactive uh, GIS map that's available on the internet to anybody.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Walters.
When someone does uh, propose development in a frequently flooded area, will they be able to combine that habitat assessment report with any of the other various reports we may be requiring them to get?
Yes, that's frequently of the uh, the practice now. They have different requirements as to what they have to assess and describe, but they can come, be combined into one report.
Okay, good.
Very good question. Any other questions for frequently flooded areas? Again, these are pretty brief, um, not as common as the topics that we've spent a lot more time discussing. There were um, no changes recommended from the Planning Commission. There are two definitions in our list of changes from the Planning Commission that we should, or that we may have even discussed, but to bring to your attention. The new definition for passive recreation is not exactly new. There was a section that was um, of the text that was omitted accidentally, so it's just- There was a section that was of the text that was omitted accidentally, so it's just been added. So, the entire definition to read, passive recreation refers to a mix of uses on undeveloped land, including wetland buffers or minimally improved lands, which include the following: naturally landscaped areas, non-landscaped green spaces, picnic areas, water bodies, trails, interpretive trails, and other similar structures or development. Passive recreation may be defined as non-motorized activity that offers construction, or constructive, restorative, and pleasurable human benefits, and fosters appreciation and understanding of open spaces and its purpose, is compatible with other passive recreational uses, does not significantly impact natural, cultural, scientific, or agricultural values, and requires only minimal visitor facilities and services directly related to safety, and minimizes passive recreation impact.
Mayor Geer? Does this definition of passive recreation come from ecology or anybody, or is it our own creation?
I believe it's our own creation. It was in the previous ordinance, and it's just being carried forward to the new ordinance as it was. There's been, other than the omitted language, there's been no changes to the definition.
Okay. I was going to propose that it just be shortened up. It seems to me that it begins with passive recreation is a non-motorized activity, that A, B, C, and D, and some examples might be the naturally landscaped areas, the non-landscaped green spaces, the picnic areas. When we were getting a lot of email about bicycles and things, there was some suggestion that passive recreation is defined to explicitly include bicycling by the EPA. I don't think I ever saw an EPA definition of passive recreation, but did we explore that?
There are many different definitions of active and passive recreation from many different agencies. If we feel the need to revise the requirements of what is included and isn't, then we can certainly do a lot more research in comparing definitions, for sure.
I tend to think that this is basically okay, but if ecology had a definition, I would want to see that one, because maybe I would prefer ecology's definition, something, you know, very standard, rather than just something that we had before.
Okay, I will take a look and see if I can explore. I know the recreation commission definitions were provided to us. I'm not sure that ecology actually has has that included in their scope of work, but I, again, let's take a look and bring that back, for sure.
Yeah, and if they don't have one, that's fine, too. I would appreciate knowing if they don't have one, though. Seems to me that their definition would be most on point if they have one, more on point than the recreation commission's definition.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
I agree that this could bear a little more study, but one question of the reference number in 19.12.020, that's not in the critical areas regulations chapter, is it? Because critical areas regulations chapter is 19.70, so I'm not finding the current definition on the screen in my draft.
Correct, because it's already in, so, the way we've, we're planning on combining Title 19 itself as the development regulations, and then each chapter in Title 19 has a separate regulations, but all of the definitions are in the beginning of Title 19 itself. So, that this critical area section, chapter, Title 19.70, will not have its own definition section. There will be just one definition section in the beginning for all of Title 19.
Great, thank you.
And so, that's where you'll find it currently.
Great. One other thing about passive recreation is, back in the fall, when we were first starting to address these questions, I had found a definition, and I still have it, I'll look for it, but my recollection is that passive recreation referred to recreation that didn't require large constructions, such as sports fields, golf courses, tennis courts, major development type, it was on a different scale of development than what we are talking about. So, I'll look for that also, see if I can send that your way, because it did come from, I can't remember which organization, but it was very official, so I'll look for that.
That sounds similar to the RCO Recreation Commission or Office.
Somebody has been at, thank you.
Certainly. Next definition that has a recommended change by planning commission is the term qualified professional, and the recommendation for this change came from the Department of Ecology, so this is specifically the wording that they requested us to incorporate, and so we've taken ecology's recommendations and added the second section that's underlined: "A qualified professional for wetlands must be a professional wetland scientist with at least two years of full-time work experience as a wetland professional, including delineation wetlands, using the federal manual, supplements, preparing wetland reports, conducting function assessments, and developing and implementing mitigation plans."
Mayor Geer?
Yes.
The professional wetland scientist is a certification, should that, I would think that should be capitalized.
This, I believe, is not. So, you're a profession, a wetland scientist that is in that profession, I do not believe, but I can verify with the Department of Ecology, that they are not saying that they should be a person who holds that certificate so that it is a capitalized. It's just the three words falling together, instead of that certificate-holding title. We can, as a city, choose, and that's how it is in Title 17, but through discussion, we were feeling that we should get away from that requirement of that certificate, that certification.
It would be easy for the department to know if they were a qualified professional, if they had the certificate. If we don't have the requirement for the certificate, you're going to have to evaluate them more. Are we not finding enough people with the certificate? Because I've definitely dealt with people that don't have the certificate, who claim to know wetlands, and then, when you talk to a person with the certificate, they seem to actually know.
No, there are a number of large firms that have folks with a long resume of experience who do not have, have chosen not to be vetted through that program.
Okay.
And so, yes, we have come up against issues with finding folks that have the official PWS. When it's just asking for their res, you know, if we have questions, we can ask for their resume, to vet them or not, just as we ask for additional information for any review.
Okay. Mayor Geer?
Mr. Miller.
So, it's been a few years, and it's been with the federal government, but it looks like we don't use hydrologists anymore? I mean, is that, you've got to be a wetland scientist to provide information? What happened to hydrology?
There's multiple additional factors in wetland science than just the hydrogeologist.
Okay.
Correct, that's a very good question.
Any additional questions? All right, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you. The last change that is on the list from the planning commission, which we discussed in the very beginning of our discussions with the procedures, critical area procedures, but it just, an administrative textual requirement would be in Title 1920, to change in the permit type table to add Type 1 exemptions, Type 2 critical area permitted alteration permits, and Type 3 hearings examiner critical area variances, to the matrix shown for the different permit requirements. Is there any further discussion on this? Very good. And those are all of the planning commission changes. That's a brief overview of the entire document over the last three sessions. If there's additional discussions, notes, direction that you would like to provide, we can talk about this this evening, or you can send those to me, and we can start compiling the next draft. Staff hopes to get working on that immediately, and get through that. Once we compile all of the directions and discussion items from these workshops and anything else you provide us, then staff will release Draft 3 for review for the public, and open an additional public comment period, and move to the city council hearing on that document. And then, hopefully, we can agree that we have a good product and move to adopt it. Is there any questions on the process moving forward?
Mayor Geer?
Moulton.
I wouldn't mind if, when Draft 3 is ready, if it came back to city council for a check-in before being released for public comments, because the public comment process should capture comments on any changes that we want to make, so that we don't have to do any future public comment processes after that. So, we did discuss some rather large potential changes, and if that could come back to us first, for just one meeting, I think that that would be helpful for streamlining the whole process. I want to make sure that we got bicycling right, and the ACFL right, and how we're going to deal with passive recreation, and maybe some numbering issues, so those kinds of things.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other comments?
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
I like Mr. Walters's idea for that also, and I'd like to ask Ms. Cooper, I just have some small questions that aren't worth talking about at a council meeting, that I would like to send, just things like definitions or links, or just little typo things. So, anyway, what would you like the deadline to be for council input to you as you work toward Draft 3?
That's a good question. We have two weeks to the holiday. There's no city council meeting next week. What is reasonable? Is a week, would August 31st be reasonable for timeline for you to gather your thoughts and get them to me?
I think it would maybe be the two weeks, but I don't know how other people feel about that. I'm not married to that. For me, personally, two weeks would be great, if we could have it to you.
Sure, I'm happy with that. We can say, well, that brings us to Labor Day, so September, Monday, September 7th.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
Mayor Geer?
Mayor.
Just a comment. First of all, I love the maps. The maps are great. Hopefully, one day, we get to a non-draft form, and I think probably the question I'm going to ask in the next couple of weeks offline is a sampling of Platts, because I'm having a hard time, you know, explaining, okay, constituents, here are the changes, and here are potential impacts, specifically things like buffers. And so, I'll probably, in the next week, shoot you a note to ask, just pick a small neighborhood, and to be able to see what parcels might be impacted, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes. I will work with Rob to start building the framework for doing a GIS inquiry for that for you.
Because I want to be able to do it before I vote and say, okay, I'm good with these regulations, because I want to be able to say I understand exactly what, you know, maybe not exactly, precisely, because I understand some of the limitations, but what the potential impacts are of this new critical areas regulation.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Yar.
I want to make sure I'm clear, I understood what Mr. Miller was requesting. I think, Mr. Miller, if I understood you correctly, you were asking for sort of a sampling of how this is affected, you know, throughout, so that you have a clear understanding, and we all do. So, will you be bringing that forward to us, Tess? Because I think it would be beneficial to us all.
I will be happy to bring that forward with Draft number three, so in the final discussion, when you bring the final draft to you to overview, and we can have an idea of that sampling at that time. And we'll start working on it, so I can try to get it out sooner than that, so you have an idea, but we can officially present it with that final outcome of the draft.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, is there any other?
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
In the planning committee, we did discuss the suggestion that I think we all received, that we pre-designate wetlands on a map, and I think our conclusion in the planning committee was that that is problematic for a couple of reasons. One, the wetland classification, the category needs to really be driven by the ecology manual for how wetlands are categorized, so we couldn't very well designate a wetland in advance, and then also give its category, because that may change. But also, wetlands change size over time, just due to the effects of rain and stormwater and everything else on the ground. So, the map would not be accurate, maybe from the day it is adopted. So, we thought that that was problematic, and not at all a substitute, in any event, for actually doing a review on the ground with a wetland scientist. But, that because we do already have some maps that show amorphous blobs that may or may not be wetlands, that it might be useful to have some text in, and maybe there is some already, frankly, that says, because there is in some other contexts that I know, you know, we've got these maps, you need to look at the maps, you need to pay attention to the maps, and where you take some action on the ground that affects a wetland that we see on our maps, we are going to presume that there was a wetland there, and we're going to require you to get a critical areas assessment to ensure that there wasn't a wetland that you have damaged, in the code enforcement context, which is, I understand, the concern of the commenter. So, maybe we can massage some language that way into the next draft, or maybe just highlight where it is already in there.
We do have in that session, I will certainly take a look and see how we can improve and massage and implement those recommendations, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you. What a great discussion. Thank you. Final closing thoughts? All right, well, thank you, Ms. Cooper. We really appreciate your work on this, and we look forward to your preview to Draft 3.
Thank you. Thank you, council, very much for all of your excellent input. Thank you, thank you, Council, very much, for all of your excellent input.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, at this time, then, we're going to move on to Item Five E, which is open for public comment. This is Resolution Twenty Ninety Nine, Designating August Twenty-Sixth as Women's Equality Day. This is a session with possible action, and I know some of the council have worked hard on this, so I'm not sure who's going to present tonight, but please go forward.
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton.
So, I think we're hesitating because this was a group effort, so I'll be brief in starting, and I'd like to thank Claudia Chiumini, who spoke to us earlier in the meeting, and our local chapter of the AAUW for bringing this to our attention, and inspiring us to bring it forward as a resolution. So, what we have is Resolution Twenty Ninety Nine, Designating August Twenty-Sixth as Women's Equality Day, honoring the centennial of the certification of the Nineteenth Amendment, which guarantees white women's right to vote, after a seventy-two-year, non-violent campaign by a lot of women who suffered and worked really hard, and suffered a lot of indignities on their way, whether it was jailing, force feeding, maltreatment of many kinds, anyway, they fought and fought for that right, so we honor them. And also, this is a day that Congress has designated Women's Equality Day, August Twenty-Sixth in nineteen seventy-three, to commemorate this day. So, we are bringing this forward, and the resolution is before us, and I think Ms. Cleland McGrath has some things to say also.
Thank you, Ms. Cleland.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Moulton, you really took a lead on this one. I just wanted to say a few words that the women's suffrage movement was something that I was lucky enough to study when I, in my early days at Fidagel Elementary School, and it became one of my most favorite projects to learn about. So, I just think it's really, really important to say a few of the names and a little bit of a background for this resolution. So, obviously, Elizabeth Cady Stanton, and Lucretia Mott, and Susan B. Anthony were real leaders in the suffrage movement. Susan B. Anthony actually came out to Washington State in eighteen seventy-one and helped to organize the Washington Suffrage Association. We actually, Washington State had passed bills in eighteen eighty-three and eighteen eighty-seven to give women the right to vote, but the Territorial Supreme Court overturned them, and then in nineteen ten, Washington State Constitution was amended to allow women the right to vote. But I also think it's important to acknowledge some of the other real leaders who were not, or not always kind of brought forward when we talk about the nineteen twenties, Nineteenth Amendment, and those are a lot of the people who also were part of the suffragists movement, but also part of the abolitionist movement, and those two movements were really entangled, there were highs and lows, they worked hand in hand, but then there were also times where they really split apart to kind of focus on their personal priorities and the greater good. So, I just think it's really important that we mention some of the African-American men and women who also partnered in this movement, including Sojourner Truth, Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, who was at a lot of the various meetings and stood with us hand in hand, then Frances Ellen Watkins Harper, Ida Wells Barnett, Mary Church Terrell, and Nanny Helen Burrows. I think that it's an important thing that we acknowledge that African-American women didn't necessarily get the vote in nineteen twenty, but they were there fighting with us and standing with us, so it's important that we continue to stand with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Cleland. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Gere?
Young.
Yes, well, you know, again, I just want to thank the ladies for their hard work. I was approached to be part of this thing, and it was just, it's just such an honor to be part of it, and to be part of a council that shows such leadership, such willingness, and to work with all facets of people, but in this case, truly, the women of our country have done some extraordinary work, and are long past due in so many ways, and so I just want to, you know, thank the ladies, our ancestors, but also the ladies of the future, and the people of the future that are working together to ensure equality for all is the rule of the day. So, I'm humbled and honored to have had the chance to work with, you know, Christine and Carolyn, Ms. Moulton and Ms. Cleland McGrath on this, and so, thank you very much, and with that, I turn it back over to them.
Right. Christine, Carolyn, Ms. Moulton. Am I here, any other discussion, or can I entertain a motion?
Mayor Gere?
Mr., was that Mr. Walters?
I just would note that ordinarily, these types of things happen by mayoral proclamation rather than resolution.
Well?
Is there any particular reason we're doing things differently this time, or just because we often do?
Ms. Moulton.
So, after consultation with staff, we thought that it would be a good idea to bring it as a council initiative, rather than just a mayoral proclamation, that we could discuss it and give it some time in this part of the meeting to share with our constituents.
With that, I move that we adopt Resolution Twenty Ninety Nine, Women's Equality Day in the Suffrage Movement.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Ms. Cleland?
Second.
Do we have motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath? Any other discussion? Ms. Hockford, you take the vote.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, before we close this item, I will read it, like I would a proclamation. Resolution Twenty Ninety Nine, Designating August Twenty-Sixth as Women's Equality Day, whereas the women of the United States have historically been treated as second-class citizens, and have often been denied the full rights and privileges of public or private, legal or institutional, which are available to male citizens of the United States, and whereas the women of the United States have united to assure that these rights and privileges are available to all citizens equally, and whereas the women of the United States have designated August Twenty-Sixth as Women's Equality Day to honor the anniversary of the certification of the Nineteenth Amendment, which was culminated seventy-two-year, non-violent campaign to extend the right to vote, right to vote for women, and whereas the women of the United States are to be commended and supported in their continued fight for equal rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Anacortes designates August Twenty-Sixth Women's Equality Day, honoring the day in nineteen twenty that all women won their right to vote, as an opportunity to continue the work for all rights of all citizens. Introduced, passed, and approved by the City Council of the City of Anacortes on this twenty-fourth day of August, twenty twenty. Thank you very much, Council, good work tonight, and is there any other business to take care of? Right at this time, I will adjourn the meeting, have a wonderful evening, goodbye.
Goodbye.